I will call the Wednesday, January eighth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Essex Junction City Council to order. I understand we have at least one agenda addition or change.
I would like to pull out consent item six C approved the city council meeting policy and special guidelines for discussion under business.
Okay, why don't we?
I have to record.
Oh, okay. Do you want me to sort of?
Recording in progress.
We can read it.
Yeah, I'll start over.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, I'll call the Wednesday, January eighth, two thousand twenty-five meeting in the Essex Junction City Council to order. We are on agenda additions and changes or changes, and I understand Marcus, you have one.
Like to request that item six C under consent items is pulled out for discussion. Should be quick, so I don't know if you want to just get it out early or if you want to do it at the end of our discussion before effective session.
Let me do, why don't we do it as the D for the budget?
Okay.
So, sound okay to me?
Sounds good.
All right. Got any, anything else?
Nothing from me.
All right, great. I'll second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, motion passes unanimously. Public to be heard. This is the portion of the meeting where members of the public can bring comments or concerns to the council. This can be on any topic. It doesn't, it's not just relegated to topics that are on the agenda this evening. Is there anyone in the room that has anything they'd like to bring up at this point? Sure, come on up, please.
Sign in?
I mean, after, that's fine, that'd be great, thank you. And just state your name and.
I'm George Dunbar. I'm here for my annual education on municipal accounting. See, tonight you have your. I see tonight you have on your agenda discussion of the twenty-six, FY twenty-six budget. And something caught my eye on that that was disturbing to me, and that was the FY twenty-four budgeted amount being fourteen million dollars. We've never voted for a budget that high in this community. It doesn't align with any prior annual reports of FY twenty-four or FY twenty-three. It doesn't align with the outcome of the budget vote for FY twenty-four. And, but I inquired, I reached out to the staff and I got some background as to why that might be and the actions that were taken to make it so. I guess. The, um. I'm a little concerned that how we got to be that way. Apparently it was through a vote taken in March of this year. And I'm really struggling with why it had to be done that way. That we changed the budgeted amount. I could see where you would, where you would reflect that change in the actual. But I don't see how a budgeted amount can be changed. I mean, just think of the implications of a budget vote by a community that says we're going to spend eleven point four million dollars. And the board comes along and takes a vote and says, no, now we're going to spend fourteen million dollars. And, uh, like I said, I understand the basis for it. I understand the guidance that was provided from VLCT. But I really question the validity of that process and how it came about. I mean, just the implications that the board could come along and change a budgeted value that the community has voted is a little troubling to me. So I I guess I just, my, my, my statement to you would be, let's make sure, I, I would suggest you go back and make sure that the suggestions that were provided from the auditors and VLCT were implemented as they should have been. Because I really question whether the board can arbitrarily change a budget number. And I guess I would also suggest this is a result of the ARPA funds that came in over twenty-one and twenty-two. I struggle, again, I'm not an accountant, how funds that were received in twenty-one and twenty-two could be reflected as revenue in FY twenty-four. And I think, as I got thinking about this, I question our process of using these what I'll call off-book accounts. And if we had sucked these funds into the accounts when we got them, as we should have, that we wouldn't be in the situation where you're having to alter basically the will of the people. So I'll just leave it at that. Just some things to think about. I would suggest you double check and make sure that we did everything correctly and legally by changing that budget number. And two, think about maintaining how we maintain some of our funds on these, I'll call them off-book accounts, like the local options tax, these ARPA funds and other funds that we have out there. They're visible to us, but they don't seem to flow through the, the budget process as I would normally expect things to run, so. Just leave it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So this was the change to reflect the money we're going to spend onto Lincoln, if I remember correctly, probably botched.
Yep, so essentially the city, like many communities, took the ARPA, ARPA funds as a lost revenue dollar amount. So, and that money eventually needed to be brought into the budget. We had that cash on hand the whole time when we got the ARPA funds. So then it needed to be designated, brought into the general fund so that then the surplus from that general fund could be brought over to the two Lincoln process. We very much have ran that process by the auditors, got that advice from VLCT, got that advice, VLCT is running with that advice from the National League of Cities and Towns for how those ARPA funds were used and appropriately book-kept, for lack of a phrase, correctly through the budget process.
Great. Thanks, George. Is there anyone else in the room or anyone online? We have a new process, so I can't necessarily see, so is there anyone else?
I do not see anybody else online.
Great. So with that, we'll move on to five A discussion regarding holding virtual council meetings as Zoom webinars rather than Zoom meetings.
So, um, we don't have too many participants today online, but if we did, they might notice that they're, this is running a little bit differently. So we've got a memo in the packet to explain that we had some Zoom bombers once or twice a while back, and the advice at the time was to consider hosting the meetings as a webinar rather than a Zoom meeting. Essentially, what this means is if we had some participants online, they would only be able to raise their hand. Then, as the host, I would allow them to unmute, then they would unmute themselves and could talk. Town Meeting TV is given a panelist link so they can come in and see everything they need to. Amber has a panelist link so she can participate as she normally would, and more importantly, we can see her video. Other folks, unless you become, unless I make you a panelist, we would not be able to see their video. So that's potentially a bit of a downside of this, of this process. But we had a relatively light agenda tonight, so we thought it was a good time to sort of just, let's test drive this, run with it and see how folks feel about it. But we don't have any participants online, so it's a little bit harder to test drive, but, um, we do have an, look at that. Oh, I was looking at the wrong spot. Thank you, Brian, for raising your hand. Yeah, okay, so I am going to allow Brian to talk. And I think, Brian, you've got to unmute yourself. And then, yes, awesome.
I only raised my hand to let you know that you could participate remotely, so, because it seemed like you didn't know that it was possible, so.
There's a panelist view and then an attendees view. So now I'm all, I'm all good. This is why we had to test drive it. So.
Excellent.
Yeah. Any questions or thoughts about it? If not, we can just keep carrying on with the meeting here, but wanted to be clear that that is why we're doing this and.
So I'll acknowledge that I know that this is becoming more commonplace practice for municipalities to do it this way. It seems to be a preferred method nationally, not just here locally. One of my concerns is just again, from, from the aspect of hosting. Regina, there, there have been plenty of meetings where you are in deep because you're trying to manage the presentation of a discussion that you are participating in as you're either presenting the information or again, your supporting staff is presenting information. But then, the two responsibilities that you highlight in memo, you know, one, having these people participate and being the one that allows them to participate, but you're also, there's also the chat, which is only really there for technical purposes or to help with technical problems. But I don't see, I would be, I'm concerned that you don't have the bandwidth for that to be consistent at each meeting, that you would be a great resource in order to help with technical issues. Not that I want to add another staff person to this process, but I, I think it's probably one of my concerns about moving to this system. And I don't know if others will think that it's a difficulty strong enough in order to go back to the way we do things.
Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a good question. I think, like we have done with Zoom meetings in the same way, I would ask Raj or potentially we think about the clerk or another one of you to be another panelist so you can be a second set of eyes on what's going on on this screen.
That is absolutely.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, on the other end of the screen, either from Brian or maybe Risa, if they could speak is to see if they notice any differences this evening as to how they're participating or what it looks like on their end. I, I use it all the time in my corporate world, but, and it, it seems to work well. But just curious if, if they could speak as to any potential differences they notice or, or things along those lines.
I would like to. I think, I think I've been unmuted. Okay, and this is Risa. From my aspect, and, you know, I think it's pretty safe to say that I have not missed a single meeting. I may have missed some of the really short, special ones, but I, I don't miss meetings. And very often, as was alluded to, people get so caught up in, in what's being discussed and what's happening that it has taken either Elaine noticing or Amber noticing or anybody else noticing that I have had my hand raised. I'm here today, and it sounds like it may only be Brian and I who are here. I've twice had to say, I'm here, my hand is raised, please call on me. So as somebody who is really paying attention and trying to pay attention, I'm feeling like I am being, my attendance is being completely demolished and, and obliterated, and I might as well just log on through Town Meeting TV on YouTube and, and not be here, which means that nobody sees that I've been here. One of the things that has been helpful as a Zoom attendee for all of these meetings is seeing who else is in the Zoom room. And so I would see, okay, you know, I, I would know what some of the people would or wouldn't be discussing. We very rarely are given a pan of who is in the room, but at least we knew who else was online. You know, now we see nothing, we're less included, and, um, you know, I do understand that there's a learning phase and it can take a while. But with there being so few people that, you know, you didn't know that we were here is very disconcerting to me. Thank you for listening.
Now, Risa, were you trying to raise your hand for public to be heard? Or just in this part of the discussion?
I had tried to raise my hand in public to be heard. It wasn't a crisis. And I just thought, okay, you know, we're not doing it on Zoom, through Zoom. You know, with this, it was like, no, 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 I'm here. I'm really here. I've been here a lot, so.
I'm sorry that you didn't get a chance. As soon as we're finished with this, I'll take a pause so that you can between items. The other thing, because I don't want you to, to miss that opportunity. And the other thing I'll say is, as we mentioned, this is the first time that this methodology, which is not straightforward, is being tried. So I, I understand exactly what you're saying. I appreciate your, your. We can count on your attendance. And I think moving forward, that should not happen. So appreciate your feedback tonight and being part of the experiment. I still do think that it's worth a try for a few meetings to see how it goes and to see if we can iron it out to a point where it can be more efficient than tonight is and. But yeah, if it needs to be tweaked or backed off of, there are many different iterations of this mode as well that we can get to and experiment with, so.
So Amber's got her hand raised as well.
Right.
Yeah, so I just wanted to point out what I'm seeing from the panelist side of this. So I couldn't see that Brian and Risa were here until Regina unmuted Brian. Now Brian and Risa both show that they're unmuted and they're present. But then Teresa's point, it's, it does say in the attendees that there are total of eight participants, so I'm only seeing six screens. So I just wanted to, to point that out to you guys is what I'm seeing on this end. Because obviously what I'm seeing is going to be different than what Brian and Reese are seeing too, because of the panelist piece of it. Or should be, I think based on what Regina was just saying. But I'm always happy to jump in as the, one of the, the people that is always online. I'm always happy to jump in and say, hey, you know, Risa has her hand raised, but I couldn't see it during public comment.
I think, you know, I think that's going to be something that happens occasionally. It certainly happened before. Frankly, it happened when we weren't using Zoom and the room was busy with people that are in the room. So I think we'll, we'll just have to be diligent and, and experiment with whether we all get panelist links if we need them and back each other up or somebody's assigned that role on a meeting by meeting basis.
But my point, Raj, is the panelist view is not showing me.
And I think, you know, I get that, I get that. I think there's also some, yeah, I think there's also some tweaking that can be done to some of these roles on the backend for that.
Yeah.
To that, to that particular point, let me ask this question because I'm not sure how the, well, the minutes are being created. Whether or not the person who does that or however that process is done, if they're not going to end up seeing the entire list, because looking at past ones, it looks like whether they commented or not, they're still being marked as others present. And so are we going to miss that in our meeting minutes? By being in this particular, being, by presenting in this particular way. Again, I acknowledge the fact that other municipalities are also doing this, and this seems to be very, becoming more commonplace for municipalities to do it this way. So I'm sure that there are solutions to some of the things we're talking about.
Yeah, we will always have a list of attendees that we can download from Zoom and just get them to the minute ticker.
Okay. But I, I, I do want to acknowledge that, that comment there. It's, it's an interesting comment to consider for us in the fact that if it feels less community by being in this mode versus in the.
Yep. Raj, Risa does have her hand raised again.
Sure, just a second. Hold one, one second, I'm sorry. Has everybody on the board said what they want to say? Sure, go ahead, Risa, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I'm wondering if we can do the super fast test if Regina could remove Brian and my ability to speak, remove us being able to mute and unmute ourselves, if Amber can still see us as panelists? Or, no, I'm sorry, as attendees, or if we disappear, and that may be some of the issue.
Just one second.
Amber said she hadn't seen us until Regina allowed us to mute and unmute ourselves.
Yeah, so you, you guys show up as a participant, which I have to like pull down. Now it's showing, I'm still able to see, I don't know what you did Regina, but I'm still able to see Brian and Risa. Brian is unmuted, Risa's not. That's what I'm seeing. And now both of them are muted, but I can see them on the screen.
We still have, I still have the little microphone icon. It wasn't there before. Yep. And yes, Regina had muted me, so it had the X through it, but it seems like before she allowed us to speak at all, you couldn't see us.
So maybe, maybe it's like a legacy thing. If you're given the choice one time, then you kind of stay on. Possibly, I don't know. Brian does have his hand raised.
Yeah, I thought I lowered my hand. Yeah.
For the remainder of this meeting, would, do you want to send me a participant link? I can assist if you want.
I think what I'm understanding from Amber, as a panelist, you can't, you have to be a co-host, which I think we're there is another co-host on here currently. So I think we're all set. Yes, that's Ashley. Yep. So she's monitoring, so I think we're okay for today's meeting. Thank you.
We should, um, not tonight, talk about, yeah, those roles, how that would work, because the co-host could have multiples. I think that can be permanently assigned to these meetings, for instance, us, that could sign in that, the proper way, credentials, and then we would have some of the ability that you're using that panelists would not have. This panelist, I think, is somewhere in between an intended.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Risa and Brian, for participating and experimenting.
We get extra points. And Risa, if you want to share what you wanted to share earlier right now, I think that would be great.
Oh, thank you. This is very quick. As I was looking through the preliminary budget information, one of the things that surprised me is seeing that our logo and signage won't be changing until fiscal year twenty twenty-six. We've been a city for a couple of years now, and seeing those signs that say Village is like, no, we went through all this work. Is it really not happening until fiscal year twenty twenty-six? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Short answer.
Yep.
We're trying to move as fast as we can.
I will say, I mean, from my point of view, I, I, I don't disagree with you at all, Risa, and, and that sentiment. It is where it is today, and I'd rather not rush it because I'd like that, some intentional thought and participation around the logo, not just changing it up to leave, leave the logo, for instance, where it is today, and, and a few other reasons, so. Would I have loved for it to be done, would I have loved for it to be done already? Absolutely.
Yeah, and that all makes sense, and I appreciate your, your letting me speak. Just as a little aside, you know how we all have our people who talk to us and we overhear things and hear different things in Hannaford? I have been told with no uncertainty that the reason it hasn't been changed is because we're back to merging. And we're not going to remain a city. And I just, I just laughed because I know that that's not true. But, you know, seeing the twenty twenty-six, it's like, oh my goodness, please, let's just put this all to rest. Thank you.
Okay, so five B interviews and considerations of appointments to the governance committee, and we have three folks that have put in applications. We really appreciate that. And I'm going to go in the order I have in front of me. Thomas Cullen. Hi, welcome. If you'd like to come the long distance of the seat in front of you, introduce yourself and thanks for joining us tonight.
Part of executive session or is?
No, the, our discussion of who we've interviewed and those assignments will be part. If, do you, is there a, do you have a concern about doing this in executive session?
No, I've just never been interviewed on TV before.
Sure, I understand. Well, this is fairly low, fairly low key. Our TV folks are pretty gentle. And like I said, we appreciate you putting an application in for this. We have, we have that in front of us, think we've all reviewed it. If you could kind of just repeat for us sort of your motivation and, and your thinking behind volunteering for this, I think we'd love to hear that.
Sure. I believe strongly in public service and wanting to give back. I've moved, I grew up in Vermont. I moved Essex Junction about a year and a half ago and spent some intervening time in other states and municipalities. And so I have a, a two-year-old daughter at home, and so just kind of getting to the point where I have time and space to try to get more involved in the community. I saw this opportunity, was very excited about it, based on my background and career experience. From educational perspective, I've studied political science and governance and have a master's in public policy. And my current employment is focused on consulting with state and local government agencies around the country to orient their programs towards outcomes and results and improved service delivery, and so can bring that comparative experience and my educational background to this. And as a resident of Essex Junction, always want to do what I can to see us serve our community better.
Great, thank you. Does any Amber I don't see on the screen, but Marcus?
I ask, since you've studied this and you've got a degree in public policy, I'm curious from a governance perspective, if you have a preferred form?
Of government?
Yeah.
Well, it depends what the goals and objectives are. There's like no panacea. Depends what, you know, we're trying to accomplish. So, you know, if you're talking about, you're saying a preferred form, I mean, I mean, it's on the blurb that you're considering, are there going to be term limits? Are going to be changes in compensation? Are there going to be, you know, what is, what is, or are you thinking about, when you say form, do you mean city versus town versus county?
I think I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about it very broadly. What I think I hear most commonly in the community is usually some debate around mayor, no mayor, kinds of mayors. You know, it happens in a variety of forms, you know, and so I'm just wondering if in your look at it, in your, you know, whether it's through your education or your experience, if you've come across, you know, a system or, again, I don't, we, I don't need to dive deep into this, but I'm just curious about whether or not you had any preferred form or preference toward a, a form of government that works in a municipality level.
I would start by conducting a listening session to understand what are the goals and objectives. And then you can weigh the pros and cons, right? Every option has different benefits and drawbacks. And want to figure out how do you maximize the benefits that works best for Essex Junction.
So you're fairly new to Essex Junction, and it sounds like you arrived after separation. And so I'm curious what your knowledge of the past, recent past has is about Essex Junction, Essex Town, and how we got where we are today.
Well, I grew up in Virgensham and Shelburne, so did come out here to play a lot of sports in high school. So, yeah, I've been, you know, knew about Essex, Essex for a long time. I obviously, there was a vote and a decision to separate. So that's right, we have, Essex Town is moving in, in procuring new services and new personnel. And Essex Junction is separated and has become the newest city in Vermont. So I understand, it's obviously been a, what, 100-year battle, actually, maybe not battle is the right word, 100, 100-year discussion of coming together, moving apart, coming together, moving apart. I know there's been multiple votes.
100-year history and a 50-year discussion.
Yeah, there we go. But obviously, now it's settled, and obviously, both places are trying to figure out how to move forward from that.
I'm still reeling from me saying you have a two-year-old, and now you find you have some time to participate in the committee, so kudos to you.
Trying, trying to be optimistic, I did see that it's a commitment through like November. So it also, to me, felt like a good way to, to me, that's a shorter-term commitment, and so that's something I felt better about as well.
That's great. Amber, anything?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Can I just ask a question in generality, as someone who's lived here now a year and a half? What are your general thoughts on Essex Junction?
I love it here. I think my life was
quality of life and services that you receive and.
Yeah, I mean, I came from a municipality where you have to shovel your own walkway, sidewalk, so I'll see if we get a little more snow here, but that's definitely nice. No, I mean, I really enjoy my time here, and it's been great so far.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much, like I said, we'll, we'll be discussing this tonight. I think the expectation is we'll, we'll make some kind of decision on the selections this evening, and someone will be in touch. And welcome to Essex Junction, and thanks again.
Thank you.
All right. Dennis Cherashansky?
Cherashansky.
Cherashansky, I'm sorry. I do, because the microphone's over there, sorry, yeah, come on over. And if you could say your name again, because I don't know if the mic picked it up, that'd be great.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dennis Cherashansky. It's an old Ukrainian name, I know, it's tough. I was in the army for four years, and anytime someone had to look at my name, tangles.
Mine's tough, but a lot shorter. So I even relate. So again, if you, we have your application, and everybody's kind of checked it out. So I guess in your own words, you know, for this particular committee, what was your motivation? What do you?
So let me give a bit of a history. So I moved to Essex Junction not too long ago, I want to say also about a year ago. And one thing I've known from Vermont as a whole, and I guess a little bit more background, I'm from Philly and Brooklyn originally, you know, the hack gives it all away, right? And, you know, I spent time in Oklahoma, North Carolina, South Carolina, and there's one issue very specific to Vermont that I've never experienced before, and it's the almost severe disregard to parking equity. And I I mentioned it in my application, but it, there is nowhere to park in the junction if you do not currently own a driveway. The unrestricted lots, as mentioned in the zoning maps, are ultimately restricted during winter hours. Nowhere to park on the street, no public lots, there is nowhere for someone who doesn't own a driveway to safely and reliably park. I don't know if any of you have been in this situation before, but not knowing every morning if your car is going to get towed or not, or if you're going to get a hundred-dollar ticket because you lack the ability to park, is a very scary, scary experience that a lot of people my age specifically seem to deal with more than other demographics. It's such a struggle for the younger demographic that wants to move in, that wants to experience this part of Vermont, that wants to get away from Burlington and these college towns, and move into a nice, cozier, very homely kind of place. But it almost feels hostile trying to move in. So ultimately, that was the fire that ignited this. And it's not just me, everyone my age that is renting has to go through this problem. And if you call Public Works or you call other public support systems, ultimately, what they told me, verbatim, do you have a friend whose driveway you could borrow? To me, that's unacceptable, frankly, that the winter parking ban has been in effect in Vermont since 1989, and there is little to no infrastructure to support it.
So as it relates to the committee that's going to look at future governance for the city, are you open to looking at other issues and how, so how would you relate the two together? I guess is my question for you. How would you put that frustration that you're feeling, which is perfectly valid, not second guessing that, towards looking at future governance, future representation models and methods?
Ultimately, what I strive for above all else is equity for everyone, regardless of their social class or demographic, because I think everybody should have fair access to the same tools, right? And if using parking as a method and as a spark that leads to other governance issues that could make the junction more equitable, I am more than open to it. I'm gladly there, every day, all day.
Anyone?
So I'll simply ask, and this actually should have, because Raj asked my question, so I got, but I got to, I should have asked this before of Thomas. If you were not selected for this particular committee, would you be open to considering volunteering on another committee?
Absolutely, sir.
Amber?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Also, Tim?
I'm good, thank you very much.
Dennis, thank you. Appreciate it.
I made that question to Thomas since we did.
Yes.
Thomas, hi. Just quick question. If you, if you weren't selected for this committee, would you be open to considering a position on another committee?
Yes, it would depend what it was, want to make sure I'd have the skills, experience, and the time to do it. So I would, you know, particularly applied to this one based on the mandate and what it would cover, and so I look at any opportunity and, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we would give you a choice. Be nicer for the other way, but. Great, thanks. Marlon Verasami? Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Marlon Verasami, I've lived in the junction about 10 years now. I am currently the board clerk on the E W S T school board. With that experience, being the the board clerk, my job solely is to understand the governance model and how that applies to the district and their operational, and their day-to-day operations. So for me, getting a chance to work and be intimate in knowledge of understanding how governance actually applies to day-to-day operations, I feel that's a good kind of transfer over to helping the city establish what kind of governance they want to do going forward. Coupled with that, with my work with the national service, we work with towns across the entire state. And as we've learned, every town works very, very differently. So that has given us intimate knowledge of not understanding just the weather, but how does every town react? What are the services they have? What are the limitations that they have? And how does it impact them? So we have to understand this, the weather, but how does it actually impact each individual town across the state? So it's a lot of work. So I think that with that knowledge as well, to understanding different models across Vermont would help me be able to bring that to our governance committee and be able to hopefully see what works in other towns and other cities, and what doesn't work, and what would work best here for our community, along with gathering community input to find a model that works best for us.
Quick question, because again, just based on what you said, and based on my knowledge of who you are and your experience, I'll ask you, do you have a preference, or do you have a leaning toward any particular model that you think the city should consider in the future?
Uh, that's a good question. I would say I don't right now, because I think at the end of the day, I think the community's got to have a lot of input in that there, and I wouldn't want to lean one way or another and kind of push in that direction. You see in cities in Vermont, most cities have a mayor. One of the largest cities, though, South Burlington does not, you know, cities smaller than us have mayors. So I think that you can make an argument both ways. There are awards out there, some do, some don't. I think there's a lot of different things that need to be weighed upon. I think really, this is a chance for the city to really imagine what we want to be. And I think presenting those options, I think, is the key, but not telling folks, hey, these are the options, but we're kind of leaning this way. I think really, it's, this is a chance, the city made their choice to become a city, to separate, I think this is another piece where they need to say what they, we want to look like when it's all said and done. Yep.
Yes.
Marlon, would you say, or how would you say your experience on the school district board might inform your experience in this committee?
Uh, well, we get to deal with a city, a town, or two towns in a city on the school board there, and we also work talking with other schools around ourselves, C V U, M M U's, Colchester, South Burlington, so we understand that, you know, the local city-town politics dynamics play into what happens in our school district. We have to balance that, we have to navigate those things, we have to be very mindful of it. And so let's be mindful of the towns around us, and how different they are, how unique each one is. You know, but that's the cool thing about Vermont, there's so many different styles out there, so we really are always mindful of those kind of things. And so we have conversations on the school board. A lot of times, we have to have conversations about, well, how would the city, how would it affect the city? How would it affect the town of Essex, and how would it affect the town of Westford? So with that constant knowledge of the last three years, I think, you know, understanding that, understanding that, you know, whatever the state looks like when it's all said and done, we're going to look at a lot of different things, or look at a lot of different models across the state. And having that experience of doing it just here locally, I feel that's easily transferable to work on the governance committee.
I mean, I'll just add that I hope for all, all the candidates to hear, I hope that when that exploration is made by the committee, they go beyond the state and beyond this country, too.
Absolutely, I think, I think.
Similar communities in other countries and other cultures and see, you know, how do they increase participation? How do they increase knowledge of issues? How do they increase input?
No, I totally agree with that, 100%, Raj.
Yeah. I don't have a question, I'm appreciative of you being willing to do both jobs. I know your, this is a very busy time.
Just a little bit, you know, so.
Something going on there. So, yeah, and that goes, goes for everybody. So thank you.
Thank you, I was also thank you to the two candidates, too, because again, I'm highly impressed with both of you, so thank you as well, too, for stepping up as well, so.
Amber, I'm going to go with, you're all set on this one?
I am, thank you.
Okay. Thank you to the three of you for, for spending time on this tonight, and as I said, we'll, I believe we'll make a decision this evening. Thanks, and please feel free to stay and listen to the rest. Okay, five C discussion and consideration of the C C R P C equip applications and match.
So this is an annual application that we, that we look at. C C R P C runs their services in a variety of different programs. Some are fee-based programs, some are a match, mostly on the transportation side. And essentially, they put out this solicitation every year to the municipalities to see what programs and projects we have need of their assistance for in the coming year. So you've got in your packet, our prioritized list of, of five things. G I S services, this is a similar ask we've been making over the last couple of years. A TV condition assessment of stormwater pipes. This is essentially an analysis to understand how, the condition of our stormwater pipes. So again, we're looking to do that. We are going to soon be embarking on an update of the comprehensive plan. And so there's an ask in here for assistance to help us with that, and that might look a little bit different, whether we also get a municipal planning grant or not, which is a grant that would come from the state, because this work is a fee-for-service work for C C R P C. So hopefully, we get that grant and can help us leverage more of those services. There is a request to look at a pedestrian crossing in the Pearl Street stretch between West Street Extension and C V E, where we don't have any pedestrian crossings there. And then a request, this is a technical data request, to look at traffic counts and traffic movement now that we have the five corners road in place, to see what that's looking like at five corners and those intersections. The memo also includes where the matches and various funding comes from in the budget, and so the motion there to move these forward to C C R P C.
Excellent. Amber, start with you. Great, Marcus?
Already anticipated this coming, I think, knowing that this was coming, I'm, I'm already in support of it, but for clarity's sake, I just want to make sure that I ask this question, since there are a couple of items on here that have dollars that would be in our F Y 26 budget. If for any reason that budget were to fail, I just want to ask the clarity question as to, would that put these projects at risk?
Yes, and the system works in a place where that's okay. So C C R P C doesn't finalize their work program for F Y 26 until the April or the May meeting. So they know, and we are communicating back and forth between the municipalities, and as they're finalizing their work plan to make sure that what we think we can cover is actually, we do actually have the funding to do that. Yep.
Tim, nothing good? All right, Chris?
I'm really happy to see a project about Pearl Street pedestrian. We've had so many residents ask for that, this is.
Especially knowing how that's all going to develop there.
Long overdue, yeah.
Doesn't sound like the council has much else to say about it, but if there's anyone in the room or anyone in Zoom land that has a comment or question about this item, now would be a great time to raise your hand in the webinar. And we will call on you.
I do not see any hands.
Anyone in the room? Okay. Any further discussion? No, okay, I'll move the city council authorized staff to submit the U P W P request applications as proposed.
Second.
Excellent, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thanks to community development and everyone else, I believe, actually, this was. I am.
Chris and Chelsea.
Yes, both.
And Ricky, too, on the traffic.
Great. Thanks to all of them for this work. All right, so I believe we were going to talk about the new five D, which is the city council meeting policy and participation guidelines from the consent agenda. And I'm sorry, that was page 212, right?
Yeah.
Okay, roughly.
So my question here is, there is language here in section three, paragraph one, concerning regular meetings will take place on the second and fourth Wednesday of every month at 6:30 PM in the Lincoln Hall conference room. My question slash concern is that this language does not give us flexibility as we are currently not into Lincoln, for instance. And as you can tell from like our holiday schedule and other situations, like we have changed these days and dates for various reasons. I'm just wondering if language needs to be added before this can be approved? Or if this is truly a concern, maybe I, maybe I'm overthinking it.
I think it's a good concern. I think we might as well, or we've looked at this policy a number of times, and we are asking you to approve it. So I think we might as well go ahead and just be flexible, put more flexible information in that sentence, rather than that level of specificity, so that it's not something that we have to return to as things switch or change.
Yeah, I think this is our preferred schedule, obviously, and our preferred location, but there will be circumstances that could change that, so.
And I, I think that's a discussion we'll be having generally speaking, every organizing meeting in April annually. So I, I might suggest it's perfect, it's a great thing to bring up. I didn't quite think about it when I read it. I'd suggest, you know, meeting schedule, you know, council meeting schedule will be set in the spring following council elections or something like that. Um, and we'll generally follow a pattern that at that time.
Yeah.
Meeting schedule will be advertised as appropriate or something like that, I think.
Sounds good.
Because I think, I think we should have that conversation every year, kind of take in the, the current situation in the community, council makeup. You know, if someone's elected, they should be, have a input into as to what they can make and what they can't make. They shouldn't only run if they can only appear here Wednesday nights, for instance. So, um, yeah. Yeah, Amber, I'm sorry, I just saw your hand.
No, it's okay, just put it up. What about saying regular meetings will take place on the second and fourth Wednesday, yada, yada, unless otherwise designated or, and, um, something to that effect? Okay, I'm back, I think. Can you hear, can you hear me now?
Got you now.
Good. Uh, so I don't know where I cut out, but I was thinking that we just put like unless otherwise, um, designated after conference room. So that applies to both the time and the place. Because I think the larger concern was the room, not so much the time. Unless I misunderstood Marcus's comment, but I read the same thing and I was more concerned about the conference room situation.
I guess I just wonder-
Just trying to keep it easy for Ashley.
Totally fine. I guess I just wonder if we, you know, in April, if there's a new board, if we move it to Tuesday or Thursday based on the new member or based on conversation, who knows what somebody brings up, that this will be just out of whack, even though we're advertising it differently. And is that just? Do we care?
The quoted sentence from the charter does say that technically that's what's going to happen as soon as-
It's Wednesdays?
As the quoted sentence here, as soon as possible after the election of the president and vice president, the council shall fix the time and place of its regular meetings. And it should be held at least once a month. So I think to Amber's suggestion, that would work okay. So then right now, regular meetings take place on Wednesdays in the Lincoln Hall conference room unless otherwise designated.
Seems off.
It seems very simple.
That works. Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to avoid somebody coming back in May and saying we should change this because we just moved the meeting to Thursday and it's weird. I'd just rather it sit and be.
Yeah. And I think that's the difference about this being in a policy versus the charter. And that's why I was asking this question. I know that because of that difference, we have more flexibility in changing that, that policy versus the charter. So that seems like a reasonable amendment unless there's huge disagreement. I'm happy to move, to approve this with that amendment to the language.
And to be, be clear, it's what Amber just said, unless otherwise, whatever you wrote down. Great.
Yes.
Sounds good. So Marcus, if there's no other, is there any other comments? So if you want to make that recommended motion on page 212 at the bottom and add as amended, that'd be great.
212.
I think that's 212.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right at the bottom. I can do it too if you want.
Here we go. I make them, I make a motion to adopt the city council rules of procedure for meetings, uh, to include the amendment as just defined heading to section three, paragraph one.
Great. Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thanks for bringing that up.
Awesome.
Moving on to five E discussion and considering, consideration of the proposed FY26 general fund budget. Which begins.
Fifty-four in the packet. Okay. So we've got Jess on here as well. So what you've got in front of you is, um, a simplified, uh, budget narrative that goes with, uh, the proposed budget that we presented on budget day. All of that information is included in this packet as well. To be clear, nothing has, has changed in there. What we also have in here, um, are the questions and the answers, um, for the questions that we received on budget day. And then we also have in here, oh, sorry, I started scrolling way too fast. The additional budget items for consideration, we also talked about those as budget day, those are modified in here a little bit. And then also talking about, um, next steps. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to, for you folks, to give us any other questions that you've got, any other direction you would like, uh, to give us for modifying the budget in any way. And getting clarity on that tonight would be super helpful and beneficial so that we can bring those edits to you at your next meeting on the 22nd. And then that is what we plan to present at your community meal presentation on Saturday the 25th. So, um-
And to be clear, that'll be a draft budget still not worn. That happens in February. So input, the reason we're bringing it to the community meal is that's a great opportunity for people to come, ask questions, provide feedback, have a discussion. Make, make changes. That's the input, that's a big input time for folks.
Yep. And then to play that out further, you folks will be able to, uh, take that feedback, think about it at your February 12th meeting, give us, again, give staff direction because by the time we get to your last meeting in February, we've got to have everything finalized and ready for adoption for the vote. So, uh, I can take any, um, questions or go through this in a little bit more detail, um, if you would like. There is, um, just clarified question, um, are we seeing the cannabis related revenue? And we are, so just to clarify, we get municipalities receive a hundred dollars per cannabis license every year. So, um, that will be properly shown there in FY26. The questions around fund balance, um, so there's information in here, um, describing that. Currently we are operating under a voter authorized, um, which was approved in April 2022 to, um, maintain and administer an unrestricted fund balance of up to 15% of the current year general fund. As we showed in the budget day, the last couple of years, we've been operating a little bit closer to 7%, not 15%. So, uh, we had collective discussion that it would be beneficial to try to get that closer to the 15%. So we're still looking at, um, the mechanics of, of doing that, whether it's bringing that back to the voters or whether there's a possibility of, of getting that into a place where it's a council, um, policy, because that concept is really a best practice. It's not, um, I would take it out of the policy realm of things and really it's a best, best practice that can change from, um, the folks that I put in here that really look at these things and try to guide government finance about the right way to do this. And some of that work is turning more to a number of days as opposed to a percentage of the budget, but, um, there's just different ways of thinking about that. So, uh, what we were able to also include in here is just trying to roughly plan, and this is a little bit tricky because all of the numbers are changing. But if you think about into the future, what our general fund budget might look like if you assume a 4% increase year over year, um, you can see how much we would kind of be, need to think about in terms of what's 15%.
And again, that's important should something unforeseen happen. You know, I keep coming back to Densmore because that was a recent huge issue that we had to deal with in front before we were reimbursed by FEMA for that, um, washout in a, in a, basically right in the center of the village. Any number of things could happen where we'd have to find cash quickly or take a loan out. Most often, I think to, to prepay expenses that may or may not be reimbursed. So there's a number of other reasons to do this. Elaine?
Regina, can you walk us through this small spreadsheet a little more closely? Because I remember our discussion was we have capital and rolling stock transfers. And we were talking about adjusting those to get to the 15% sooner. And so is, is the second line of this spreadsheet reducing that transfer to capital and rolling stock so that there's more to add to fund balance? Or could you be more, could you describe it more closely what, what is being done on this spreadsheet?
Yeah, so I can share that and Jess can chime in here too. Um, but I am just noticing that Amber's got her hand raised.
I was going to ask a similar question, so I'm going to let Jess answer that and then I might have a follow-up.
I'm wondering the same thing.
All right. Jess, do you want to take what's, what we're looking at here?
Sure. So the amendment that is on that second line, the 66, 9, 75, et cetera, um, is that amount is what the scheduled or budgeted increase is that each year? So by year, uh, so basically it would, what we would do is maintain the, or maintain the transfer that we're doing currently. Um, we just wouldn't increase those, uh, capital transfers in future years. So there's one transfer, for instance, that's at like 460,000. We would maintain that every year going forward. The budgeted increase, um, is the amount that you're seeing on this line two of the spreadsheet. Basically just to illustrate that the budgeted increase, for example, in FY26 is 75, 6. But we would actually need like 168,000 to get us to 9% unassigned fund balance.
Line indicates that the capital and rolling stock transfers are not being changed at all and that the bottom lines are an addition of funding for fund balance transfer.
Yes.
Yeah, and I think the idea here was to explain that if you take that concept and instead of increasing those capital transfers as we have been traditionally, instead of you take that increased increment, what would that look like in comparison to what that bottom line is, which is the, uh, fund balance?
Just for fund.
Yeah. Closer to 15%. And so part of this is illustrating that just doing that doesn't quite get us there. If that, if that makes sense, but it does get us closer than if we don't do that at all.
Right. Okay. And so the discussion we were having last meeting was what if we changed the, the percentage that was transferred on capital and rolling fund, rolling stock and moved some of that down, moved that fund, some of that to fund balance? And then once we achieve 15%, we go back to the full percentage. So that's not what's reflected here.
Correct.
And I'm wondering whether that is still a viable opportunity. And my, my second question is this increase, this, you, you mentioned that getting to 15% by FY32 would require a 4% increase a year?
This, this exercise projecting out to FY32 is assuming that your general fund budget is increasing by 4% every year.
So this is not the sole cause of the 4% increase. This is just a portion.
Yes. Because the, the, um, I'll call it a policy for lack of something better. Um, the, the direction right now is up to 15% of your general fund. So we have to figure out what the general fund, an assumption of what the general fund is going forward in order to know what 15% of that is.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
Yeah, like some random, well, mostly random health insurance increases, agreements, all that kind of, okay. So it's not a 4% increase a year simply because we want to bulk up the fund balance? That was where I was going with that.
Yes, that is not what the, not the purpose of this. Yes.
I mean, I also had a question last time about, and so Jess, the second line, as you said, is an increase over the current base of what we did last year. Every year, so in FY25, we added 67,000 more. In FY26, we're going to add 76,000 more, for instance, and on and on. And it's every year we're going to contribute more than the previous year to the capital rolling stock budget. That's what that line two is describing.
Right.
Right, correct.
And I think I had a question on that level of increase every year, whether that was sustainable, but that's not really what we're talking about now.
Well, sort of is.
Yeah. I mean, it looks to be about 11%, 11 plus percent every year. Because I mean, you know, in six or seven short years, that's almost tripled what we're doing now. And I just don't, that level of increase is, is significant. So I am curious about the sustainability of that.
I mean, we, we chose to really focus on that because of the cost of projects and the estimated increase in supplies and labor and stuff. It wasn't just like, let's sock this away for rainy day. It was a good reason.
But it does bring up the question that we have to have sooner than, conversation we have to have sooner or later, or some board does about whether everything is funded with cash, um, with grant matches, or we, we start to think more about a mix of debt and more than we do now. And I'm not, I don't have a, I'm not suggesting we go one way or the other. But that's, it's a conversation that we keep bringing up and we don't get, understandably haven't gotten to yet. None of these are judgments, I'm just saying, just saying. It does, it does.
And every-
In the next couple of years, we, we probably have to have that conversation.
But also every year we have a project, there's, there's some that are grant, partially grant funded and we've, we've bonded for construction before. So I think it would be a safe assumption that future boards would have a mix.
Yeah.
And so therefore that level of sustainability might be able to be held slightly lower in anticipation of that or assuming that. But it also forces it as well, so.
Yeah, and I think the, the concept here is, um, you know, we can be sure, because we already do know that we have a lengthy capital project list of things that need to be funded. And so to continue to decrease the amount of funding that's been going towards paying for those projects, um, is a little tricky, right? Because we know we still have an extensive list and we will always likely have an extended list of capital projects. So to properly prepare and plan for that seems logical and makes good sense. I do think if we wanted to look at the increment of how that's grown, which is row two here for a number of years to try to get the fund balance in a better place, there's some logic there to doing that. Pulling from the capital transfer more than that, I'm not sure that's, we certainly could do it. There's nothing that says we can't do it. But that, uh, feels a little more nerve wracking.
I mean, for me, it's just, if you look at FY32, like at that point, we'll be putting almost three quarters of a million dollars a year into capital and rolling stock. And does that, like, I, I don't know that that's sustainable going forward. And the other thing is there will always be a long list of capital projects, always. And then we just built the Crescent Connector and in 10 years, it's going to be on the capital project list. Like it's never, ever, ever going to end. Whereas a fund balance is basically your rainy day fund for emergencies. And we have no idea when the next emergency is going to start. And we have no idea when the next emergency is going to start. And we don't want to be caught short. And we could achieve 15% and then hover there. Like this is a short term project, basically. So I'm really in favor of doing what we can to get to that 15% as soon as we can to protect ourselves financially the next time we have, you know, when the next 500 year flood happens in two years, you know, like, we can't, we can't predict what that's going to be. And so I would much rather be a little aggressive in reaching that fund balance sooner, target sooner.
Can I?
Yes.
Sorry, I memorized that.
No, 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 that was great. I really actually did appreciate it. And I don't want to cut Amber off if she needs to share right now, but I did want to ask a question based on what you just said there. In trying to accomplish this, let's just say, and again, based on the budget that is in the packet for tonight, that a 2.1% increase, you know, just if nothing else for me and I think for the public at large. So if it were our goal to do this and to set up, set up this fund, you know, and get there, get to this particular goal, why could we not say the point nine that gets us to the 3% increase, put that into the budget as for this purpose? For our rainy day fund, whatever you want to call it. But I mean, you know, for this, for this balance, so that you've got it in building that up. Because it feels like in our discussions, for some reason, we couldn't quite do that? And maybe I'm wrong, but.
I think it has, Regina can explain it, I think, better than I could for sure, or Jess. But I think it has to do with the fact of how, how that policy is worded. And that gets into the conversation in the, in the memo about going back to the voters and asking for a rephrasing of how that is, right? It's, it's, it's.
Yeah, it's, it's up to, so it's not, it doesn't give us a whole lot of directive on specifically planning to get there. That's the, that's the tricky, tricky part of it. And part of that has some logic behind it, right? As a municipality, we want to be careful about raising taxes to save it as opposed to needing it. So it's just the, the balance there of trying to do that correctly. If we had a policy that was more, more specific in terms of getting to 15%, we would have a little bit more leeway to do that.
Would it be, who was starting to have not put this necessarily in front of the voter, right? Maybe we put this in, this question in front of the voter. But maybe it means that we can't act upon it in this particular budget yet because we need that direction. And we need some community engagement to kind of pose this question. And then understand if they're comfortable with it. How comfortable are they? Work with the community through information, question, answer as to, you know, why and how this is used. Because I think one of the big things that we have heard over the years is, again, from the standpoint of taxpayer is, I need to know how my taxes are being used. So if we are using this in a rainy day fund capacity, if the voter is clear on the fact that it's going into this and it's going to be used in these circumstances and only in these circumstances, and it won't cross that 15% for instance, if they have that clarity, then they might be comfortable with it. And I'm not sure that we have that clarity in right now publicly as to how and when this would be used that way.
I mean, I think that'd be great. I mean, if, if we were to go to, go to the voters, that is exactly what we would do. I don't think there's, that's not a, something we wouldn't do for sure. I, I think I want to be clear that this isn't a new fund, that this exists, this practice exists. Funds that are left over year over year go into this fund. So this isn't a new practice and it's not a new line item. So it's more about how do we get, you know, and we frankly left some money behind when we left the town. And that was clear that that would happen. And as we took on, as we retook services, our budget went up, which lowered the percentage of relative general funds or relative fund balance to a point, I think, seven-ish percent right now, which is a little worrisome. A little less than a month of leftover cash. So I absolutely think that yes, we would go through that to make sure folks understand. I, I would advocate that we should also, at the same time, really consider this transfer. And should the voters say yes, and we can reimagine it again for '27 and go back to the original plan? Because then we can just have a different process for assigning those funds. And just because we asked the voters to change that language or change that, I don't know if we call it a policy or what it would be called, doesn't necessarily mean we would tack on an extra percentage in the tax rate to get there. It still might be done within the budget in different ways that we already do now. I just want to, so I don't, I don't think, A, we need to, we could also do what we do for economic development for a period of time and tack on a 10th or a quarter or 15th of a percent until such time as it reaches, there are a lot of options, I would think. We could.
And we already do, we already are required, if the fund balance goes over 15%, we are already required to give that back to taxpayers. So it's not, that wouldn't change.
Yeah, no, I totally understand. I'm just, I wonder if this question, if we've got enough runway to not just pose this, I know we can get this on the ballot if that's what we want to. Do we have enough time to explain it comfortably have this discussion with the community before this upcoming vote?
I, I think it's a very clear thing to say to the public. Right now, we are being encouraged to save up to 15%. But we only have 7% now, that's only X number of months. And Gatsby and other accounting principals are not requiring, but recommending that we have a minimum of 15%. So we just want to change it from up to, to a minimum of. And then keep the, anything over 15 goes back to the taxpayers. And it feels like a fairly simple thing. And I've definitely seen at town meeting, well, back when we used to all gather at town meeting, changes like that explained and the audience would be like, oh, okay. And then everyone votes yes, because yeah, it's just administrative, basically.
And I think in a climate where we're presenting a lower increase, that doesn't hurt. And I wasn't, I wasn't saying all that to explain it to you necessarily, I just wanted that out. You know, like that this isn't new and that this is something we do. So I wasn't like directing any of that really to you in response.
These balances are confusing for voters. So no, I appreciate the fact you did. It's why I'm also asking the questions that I'm asking, because I think that additional clarity is really helpful. So thank you.
Amber, did you, after Jess's explanation, have more follow up for that or anything new?
I just have a question. I guess I'm, I'm still unclear as to what the proposal is from the council. Is, is the proposal that, just looking at FY26 on the spreadsheet, that we're adding 168,000? Or what is the proposal? If we were, if we were to move forward with this this year without asking voters and doing everything that, that Marcus was just talking about? Is that clear?
The question's clear. I was still a little in the gray area about how we were going to get to these numbers and go to follow up in a few minutes on that. So thank you for that.
So maybe, yeah, so maybe it wasn't decided, I guess. Then the follow up question of that is I'd like to understand what the implication to the capital plan is? If, if we are talking about basically taking and not, again, understanding the answer to the first question, if we're talking about not doing a $75,000 transfer and maybe moving that into the unassigned fund balance in lieu of what's the implications on the, on the capital plan and the projects that are forthcoming?
Along those same lines, I would like to ask the question, is there an item in the capital plan rolling stock list that I have concerns about? And again, this came from our budget discussion. So I, and I don't know, like if we were, depending on the council, how the council feels about it, if they were in agreement. Let's just say, you know, we dropped an amount out of that rolling stock fund. How it then, how it then impacts this flow of the balance?
So, yeah, let me just try to give us some direction here, I think. So I think we can put to the side the mechanics of how we change the policy. Because we don't need to know that tonight. Jess and I still have to do some more research on that anyway. That can, we don't need to worry about that part right now, whether we're going to the voters or we're doing something different. So instead, we can really just sort of focus up on what direction the council wants to take in terms of, I'll just say roughly, getting more into that unassigned fund balance. And so I think Amber's got a good question about specifically if we kind of just focus in on FY26, which is really the only thing we are focusing right now, because you've got to figure out your FY26 budget. And I don't know, Jess, if you can, if you've got an, are able to tell us what the impact on the capital fund, on the capital plan would be if this $75,000 doesn't go into capital projects?
Yeah, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect anything immediately. It's really kind of that rolling balance that builds, that we would see the effect of it over time. For example, the way the capital plan sits now, FY36, we have a negative fund balance with that increase year over year incorporated in. So basically what's going to happen is by not increasing that annual transfer, we will be in the red sooner than FY36.
At the end, in FY36, like our, our, our capital projects list is so very long. And projects are planned out year to year, only up to a certain point. And then they're all lumped in at the end, is that correct? So it, it's always going to be a negative balance at the end until we start planning out the next several years. But that's, oh, sorry.
Elaine, just to clarify, they are scheduled out by the year until FY40. And then anything on FY40 gets lumped in. Yeah, yep, right.
But that said, like, I'm trying to reconcile the language of the policy with what we're trying to accomplish here. And my understanding is for FY26, we still have the policy of up to 15. And we should not be assigning money just for the sake of saving it. Or, you know, taxing residents for the sake of saving that money in a rainy day fund. So we can't do anything to FY26 because we would be doing that. We would be setting aside money, taxing folks for money that's going to be set aside. So we would need to change the policy first before we enacted these suggestions. So I think that buys us time. So we ask voters to update the policy this year so that FY27's budget process can incorporate this annual growth for fund balance. So we're only like asking for one change as opposed to a policy change and a budget change at the same time.
Thought we just, I understand what you're saying. Makes, makes sense. I thought we discussed that the, the last time this came up, that it was possible to do what we were just suggesting. We were just looking for what it would look like and the impact of it. And I'm trying to remember how that conversation had. I can't.
I don't remember that being resolved. I remember that being like, I think there might be an issue. And now we know what the issue is.
Yeah, I think, I think from the staff perspective, we have a little bit more research to do to figure out if we have the leeway to do something different under the current policy. So we can work on that further in between now and February 12th. So I know this is a little bit confusing, but if we assume that we can do something now in the FY26 budget, is there direction from the council that you do want us to shift the increase on the capital transfer for this purpose?
I know Amber has strong feelings about not doing that.
I would say yes.
Yes, we should do that or no, we should not?
Yes, we should, we should look at, because we're, we're still going to have a, I just lost the transfer page, 580 some odd thousand dollar transfer. It's not like we're not, I, I get we're slowing the, slowing the growth by not increasing every year. But we're still going to have a substantial transfer to capital and rolling stock every year. It will just be flat for a period. Then I would suggest, based on staff research, you know, what's next? Is it going back to the community? What does that look like? Does that happen this year? Does that happen next year? And we can talk about what that, I'm, I'm just thinking we could talk about what that conversation looks like. I mean, we can couple it with, this is our current plan. We're concerned about, you know, this board, I think, is very conservative when it comes to capital and future. And I don't think any of us want to change that. And I think if we explain that, in addition to explaining what this is and say, we'd like to keep this conservative approach to capital planning, we'd also like to use a few years of this to get a rainy day fund in place. Then we can see what the preference would be. And like I said, maybe it, maybe it is something like the economic development item that's time limited and specific incremental as, or, or we just do it with accounting and their people are okay with it. I don't know, I don't know.
To me, the fun, doing it the economic development way is still adding additional tax to set aside money.
Well, it would have to be a policy change. I mean, that would, that would be in lieu with a community saying so, that that would be, that would, that would be in addition to that. I don't see it, I don't think it could happen any other way, as far as we know now. So Amber doesn't think so, I think so.
I think so.
Elaine, Marcus, Tim? Understand that right now, this is still in the exploration. Let's see what this looks like, do a little more research phase. It's not a hard and fast decision.
The rolling stock fund is the piece that I wanted to visit. And I don't know if this is the appropriate, but there was a comment by Jess at Budget Day that kind of glanced over the public works equipment had been pushed out substantially to the tune of another, to 12 years. And I know just from happenings around that, you know, there, there are going to be some needs, not only for public works, for other departments in the future, in the near future. And so I'm wondering about the health of that rolling stock fund in order to meet current obligations. And if we're talking about, I know that there's been some equipment recently ordered for public works. We talked about that. But then there was the, the comment that was made that we just kind of glanced over, because Jess said, we're working on it. But I don't know what we're working on it means. You know, the street sweeper, we've all seen that. And I know that that's shared with wastewater, because there's some credit there that's given by the state for sweeping the drains out, if I understand it correctly. So I'm wondering about the health of that fund as we look to the future.
So I think we can look at rolling stock, because I think those are some good questions that we can look at in a second. But before we fully move there, I just want to.
Yeah, I, I'm professionally indifferent about the other piece of it, like. Yeah, I, I'm professionally indifferent about the other piece of it, like, I mean, I don't argue that it needs to, with a, a month's worth of cash on hand isn't, you know, ideal.
Marcus?
Because we're talking about $75,000.
Yep.
I don't think, in, in both scenarios, I think it's not necessarily a positive. Again, hearing all the, all the discussion, all the concerns, you know, I, either way, it's, it doesn't feel good, I think, either way. Honestly, I could go either way on this, because I totally understand the need to get to that point where we're more comfortable in those moments where an emergency happens, and we need that, that cash to help us in those moments. I also see that, you know, we need to get projects rolling a little faster, maybe, if at all possible. And if that $75,000 helps us do that, I also don't want to deny that either. So I wish I could give you a, a clear yes and no right now, and I apologize for that, but I think I need, I think I need a moment to consider this on occasion a little bit more.
Is it helpful to recall what Jess said a little while ago about how it won't impact the immediate future by reducing the transfer to capital and rolling stock? It will accumulate over time, because there's less overtime. But the projects that are in the hopper for the next year or two, would not, as far as I'm understanding, would not be affected.
So when does that impact happen, and is that negative or positive?
Let's just say FY36.
Well, let me just, let me just jump in, because we've got a lot of other stuff to talk about. Three of us would like staff to continue to look at this. Two are still have some questions, or sorry, two. Tim's professionally indifferent, so.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's the best way to put it.
I think we need more information to kind of, it sounds like we need a little more information. So I would suggest, yeah, this is something to continue to look into. And if that clarifies things for folks, then excellent. If it also clarifies the other direction, also excellent.
And, and I don't know, again, to Tim's point as well, there is an item here in, in the rolling stock as well that I wanted to bring up. And I don't, if, if it's better to bring that up now, because it might help in this figuring out, I don't know, but it's in regards to the command vehicle for the fire department.
So I do want to go there. I just want to be clear. So Jess, when we are looking at this table that you put together about the capital rolling stock transfer increase over prior year, line two, so that that is talking about multiple capital transfers, rolling stock included. So just want to be clear about that. The number associated with rolling stock is probably very low in comparison to the other capital programs, but that's simply the connection I wanted to make before we actually can jump over there to look at rolling stock. Okay, anybody happen to know rolling stock page number off the top of your head?
117 is where I'm looking right now.
I have 120.
Marcus has been off all night, so I'll trust.
It's, it probably is. What'd she say?
118.
Oh, I see. 118. Okay. So I am going to just share this page on the screen, so everybody's on the same page. Okay, so it's teeny tiny, but I don't know where we want to start, with Marcus's question on this, or Tim's question?
So.
Is this fire department specific?
Yes.
Whose question is it? The fire department specificity on the budget? Yours or Tim's? Okay.
No, I, in listening to the chief talk about this particular expenditure for the, for the command vehicle, and again, taking into account on Budget Day, where we were with the 1.4% increase on the budget, again, thank staff for that diligence and that effort. And listening and reading what was being considered, you know, what was really in that budget on that day, that 1.4% increase was what we need as a city. We felt short in the parks, and I, going back to the earlier piece, you know, support that 50,000 to support, sorry, not parks, Public Works. But in listening to the explanation about the command vehicle, it brought me a concern that this sounded like more of a need. This wasn't going to expand our capabilities. This, this is, this was not, it didn't feel like a need at the moment. So therefore, again, in consideration of the nickel dime process, that a budget process is, this felt like a moment where this was something that I would be okay, redline for now, based on how I understand the reasoning for this particular purchase. And this, since this is happening in this next fiscal, that's why I was asking the question, it's going to impact the balance.
So that shows up actually on page 120, I think. Yep, two, three quarters of the way down, let's say.
I guess I'd want to hear from Chief again about it. I'd be curious what what the schedule for other ladder and 30. No. 139. Oh, yeah, my, I mean, just speaking for myself, I'd want to hear from Chief again as to the thinking behind that before getting rid of it.
We can certainly ask him for some clarifying information.
Sure. Be good. Yeah, I think, Regina, you mentioned breaking down that 75,000-ish between capital and rolling stock. The rolling stock was about 17.2, and the capital was 15, 58.4 of the 75 for next year.
Yeah, so relatively low. And then if you look back at the, at page 118, so it looks like we're doing okay with the fund balance in the rolling stock. FY27 gets a little bit low.
Regina, can I turn on the rolling stock and answer Tim's questions? I think that might help. Okay. So to speak to the question that Tim had about specific equipment in Public Works that I had mentioned on Budget Day, the two pieces of equipment that I was referring to are a loader and a sweeper. So for example, the loader is a 2014. They usually have a 10-year life cycle, so we should have actually replaced that machine in FY24. It wasn't done and is currently in the schedule for FY31. So we're trying to get almost double the life out of the loader than, you know, over what it's scheduled for, what it can probably actually give us. And the same thing goes for the sweeper. That actually is a 2013 and should have been replaced in FY23, also has a 10-year life cycle. And that's not scheduled to be replaced now until 2032. So that's an additional nine years on top of the 10 expected life cycle. So those are the two pieces of equipment that are really in dire need of replacement, and we are, we're getting along with them now. But the further we push, especially any of these trucks and equipment, the further we push it out, the higher maintenance and repair costs will be every year.
Associated with replacement costs for either of those pieces of equipment?
Yes. So the loader, for example, I think we put in a, Ricky and I had worked to get current pricing, like, before this budget cycle. So what I did was I took that number and then applied a 5% inflation rate each year to it. So this is a projected future cost based on an actual cost basically, like, within the last year. So the loader we're projecting would be just over 300,000 to replace, and the sweeper would be about 455,000 to replace.
Can we kind of calculate a financial savings by keeping this on track and in schedule versus pushing it up to 31?
Two answers to that question. One, we, we wouldn't be pushing it out. It is scheduled for 31 and 32. So if we wanted to replace them sooner, it would cost, like, we would need to do more of a transfer to the rolling stock fund sooner. As far as figuring out the cost, with these machines, they're fine until they break. When something breaks, we're talking tens of thousands of dollars to get it fixed, and there's no way we can know what or when that will happen. So I, it's, it's a hard question to answer. I could, I mean, I could check with Ricky to see if he has ideas or thoughts on, like, common breakdowns with these machines and what we're looking at for cost. But it's a very unpredictable thing.
You know, just thinking about the financial methodology to be used in order to, you know, keep these vehicles going, so we can keep the services going. Totally understand, anything could happen at any time, but at the same time, if we're adding another handful of years to their lives, you know, we're increasing potential risk while increasing, as acknowledged, increasing finding maintenance costs. And so I just wonder if there's a potential savings delta or not by doing it this way. And I would assume too, that in discussion with Ricky to get to this point, he's also said that he perceives that the, this piece of, these pieces of equipment will last this long. But I'm not a judge of this.
Yeah, not true. Ricky's comments are, we need to replace these machines now. How soon can we actually do it? And the soonest I could move them up in the schedule was 31 and 32.
So just 70,000 for the fire truck? How, how, what does that do to the schedule for both of those, do you think? A year?
I think that, yeah, it would probably move things up a year. Or we might be able to move a truck out a year and move the loader up two years, for example. I think there's probably some wiggle room in there.
So the loader is, looks like scheduled for 26.
Yep, so I moved it originally, it was scheduled for 31. And I moved it up to, I have a note that I moved it to 29, but maybe I was able to move it up farther. Let's see.
2014 Ken 9?
No. It is, yes, so that's FY29. I was able to move it to FY29. And then the, the sweeper was originally FY32, and I moved that, I was able to move that up two years as well.
Loader I'm talking about. Oh, I was looking at the wrong name. That's the dump truck. Never mind.
Yep. It's nearly impossible to read the spreadsheet, Raj, so.
Well, if you're saying that, I feel better.
Yeah.
So sorry, Jess, can you clarify one more time where both of these live right now? The loader is on the schedule to be replaced, what year?
In FY29. And the sweeper is FY30.
Okay, thank you. So we could look at what happens if we shift some things around, if we look at the command vehicle coming out, what does that do for those two pieces of equipment? And we're, we're talking about these two pieces of equipment. I know I've heard quite a bit about where these two pieces of equipment are on the, on the list, but are there are there any others from your perspective, Jess, that we should be thinking about as they're in really rough shape, they're pushed so far beyond their life that we're really, should be looking at those two? Or that's really just the sweeper and the loader?
Yeah, from my conversations with Ricky, the sweeper and the loader are the priority pieces of equipment right now. When I, I'll follow up with him to see what his thoughts are on shuffling other things around further. I can get information from him on what the other priority pieces after these two are. Everything, the trouble is, everything right now is being pushed out well beyond its estimated useful life. So Ricky and I have been trying to work to, like, bring everything back into the actual replacement schedule that once existed and got off track. So it's, it's really just like which, which piece is giving us the most trouble right now, and we'll prioritize that next year.
All right, so it looks like we need some more information on all that?
Yeah.
Okay. Was that the, no, that's great. That was the, okay.
Thank you, Jess. I, I appreciate you having that information at your fingertips.
Yep, absolutely.
So we need, Amber, it's been a bit since we heard from you, and this, you good?
I'm good.
Okay. Working through this memo and the Q and A, we've already talked about the GMT Special Assessment, which we we've already talked about the GMT special assessment, which we approved, I think at the last meeting. There's the $25,000 allotment for the Equity Advisor, CCRPC is proposing for the, I want to say five communities. That's on page 56. Thoughts on that?
I think it's, we should pursue it.
Amber, Tim?
I'm good with the shared service.
Good.
Awesome, me too. We've taken care of one under the additional items below that. Two. As far as the Essex, I know this is a tiny amount, but it's more about the process for me. I really don't feel strongly about this, but since it's on the list, I would just assume wait until we had a process before we start. Assigning money to organizations, realizing they're, they're kind of keeping our history going.
When you say start a process, you mean like, like something like the town does?
Yes, yeah, because I think if we did this, for instance, I can imagine another group coming forward and saying, well, if we knew you would have done that, we might have asked. And I know it's a tiny amount, but.
But is the historical society the same as the other two, though? I didn't see it as the same. And from, I will say from my standpoint, I'm supportive of the historical society piece. I absolutely agree with you that we need a process to consider those, anything else, like those other two examples.
I agree with Marcus. The other two seem that they have other revenue sources they could go to, whereas the Essex Historical Society doesn't really, other than the residents of the community. And it is an organization that supports the history of our community. So, it's not a jask. And I, yes, it's a precedent, but it will take us quite some time to set up the process.
I'm fine with not agreeing with it, if that's what the group wants to do. It's totally fine. And I agree with the other two, they, you know, I just don't think we should go down the road for the same reasons yet.
Yeah.
Anxious to kind of get there, but.
Yeah, I think it's a very worthwhile conversation for us to have the community.
Right.
So, in terms of historical society, Tim, Amber, what are your thoughts?
I would support, supporting the history of our great community.
I can get on board with that.
Let's do it. Strategic action plan list, is there anything? If there are any changes the council would like to make for FY26, Steph will need this information at this time. So, is there anything?
It's such a big list.
It is a big list.
We'll just keep it the way it is.
I think we have to keep chugging through it methodically, right? You know, I don't want to disturb, I don't want to disturb the.
No, and I think.
We joke about this thing all the time, right? And there's always a chuckle behind it, but it, it's so extensive and there's so much thought and so much process that's already.
It's not like we're not doing anything.
Right, and it's on a, it's on a roll and everybody's about to see it, the fruition of some of this great stuff come. And so, I'm excited for tomorrow as we move down the currently structured list.
No, the other thought too is that we get, like, don't mess with this list because something might come up that needs to get done. It's not on the list yet, so, plus a lot, also a lot of work went in from the community, great community input and stuff working.
I think if nothing else, one thing that I would like to see from the list, though, is this listed in a way, like visually, when I look at the rolling stock, for instance, right? You can visualize it and go, this is a long list, but at the same time, you can visualize like how and when it happens. And right now, in the current list format, it's just a very long list. So, I don't have a good visualization of like when we're tackling these things. And I think looking at some of these items that they're going to happen, we're going to be tackling each piece of the strategic plan. And I don't think right now the visualization speaks to that really. But I definitely would like to feel like we have more, whatever that, whatever that direction, you know? I think we need to have a discussion on this list and figure out how we prioritize this. A rubber structure, I don't know, something that helps us put this down, so when these kinds of things happen.
You mean for future additions? Because the list is our, the list is, already has that.
You're just looking for like a timeline so that we can see how it's going to look?
Yeah. But so the community too, can also kind of have some level of expectation when things might start.
Yeah, and I think, so you know, we've talked to, that we will incorporate a retreat process for the council in the spring so that you're having time to look at that list. And I think we probably will have a structured list of questions or something that helps you look at the list and decide have things changed in such a way that you want to reprioritize for some reason? So, you'll know like what's getting accomplished and what's, hasn't been accomplished yet. And other things probably will come to the table. So, how do you decide that when the new things come to the table, rise further up than something's already on the list? So, certainly that, there will be a process that we'll have to think through on how you work through that list every year. Okay.
Next on 57 is GBIC, I think you were gonna, did you have a chance to reach out?
Oh, I was delayed in reaching out to them primarily because of the holidays, but I have reached out and I'm waiting for a response.
Was there anything else on people's minds?
I'm sorry, can I just circle back to number one here? Are we?
Oh, I thought, I thought we decided that we would do that at the last. We had, well, we should do that one.
I'm a big yes on that one.
Okay, yes, 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 okay.
Thank you. Amber's nodding.
Screen, screen says yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay. So, that, that kind of walked us through the memo and a couple of other things. Was there anything else that people had thoughts about?
Couple of things that I just wanted to bring up, if you don't mind, if somebody wants else to go first. So, just based on a resident question, so I want to answer this question, I've asked this before and I'll, I'll have it again since it came up again for the resident. You know, looking ahead at a project, because some of this is in consideration and part of our budget. When would we expect to see the, a facility study on the Parks and Rec and the Public Works Facility? And I wonder if that study is looking at all city facilities or if it's just looking at these two pieces?
So, there is a rec master plan facility study. I will have to circle back on the exact timeframe of where that is right now. And then there is a process to start looking at the public works facility and how we get ourselves set up and prepared for a bond vote for doing something different with that building. That piece is being thought, the process of that and what that looks like and how we get from now to a bond vote, which hopefully would happen next year, but not certain of that yet, is in Hamlin Engineering's hands right now to think through that process and what that looks like and what other subs we might need at the table in order to pull that all together to get an estimate of a cost. So, that is in process. It's not a small effort and we all need more time to be able to get our heads, heads around that. But it is in the works and we are aware of it and trying to keep that moving along. We are, we don't have something in the works that is looking at all of the city facilities collectively in an assessment kind of way, if that's, if that was your last question, I think.
Yeah, if it was taking a broader, you know, just general facilities as a, as a municipality and kind of taking that into account.
Not right now.
I need to pull up other questions, but I'm letting you answer.
Okay, okay. You'll, you'll interrupt him, I know you'll interrupt.
You sure? If my ADHD circles back around, I will certainly interrupt you.
Feel free, I put my foot in my plank, that was my first year.
Tell that with yourself to the first step.
In the, in, under buildings, Maple Street Park and Pool, under the notes, there was that note in there concerning the EJR P capital for maintenance building expansion. Can you just remind us again, the purpose of this particular building? This 30,000 for this particular structure?
So, this was partially a need to adjust the space in the maintenance garage for EJR P facilities folks to play the larger city building role. I don't know where that stands and the need for that as we are at the moment in another level of experiment, I'll say, in terms of how we are handling city facilities and buildings. So.
So, is this 30,000 then potentially unneeded in this budget?
I'm not comfortable saying that, but I will look into it further because I think it's a good question. I think even with current staffing, as they're situated in that maintenance building, is not great in any way, shape or form. There are two staff members in there and there will continue to be two staff members in there when we fill a vacancy. It's not great space for that, so I will circle back.
I just want to understand the question, was that Maple Street Buildings, Park and Pool, Buildings and Grounds?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, I have it on 93. Page 93.
Yeah, okay, it looks like it's coming out for next year, not going in.
Did I misread that? My apologies, that's the case. I think add 30,000 transfer to EJR P Capital for maintenance building expansion.
Sorry, I was looking at it coming out of buildings and grounds above. Oh, 431, I didn't see the note when you mentioned that. It looks like it just moved. Gotcha. Thanks.
On the building maintenance fund, the list of future projects, is there, do you feel that there's any need for us to discuss a relook at these and reprioritize these particular projects in any way?
97?
Yeah.
You can give the page number as you go.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize, and my numbers are off because I'm, I have notes on the old, before revised copy, so my numbers.
So, just to confirm, we're talking about the building maintenance phone?
Building maintenance fund, yeah.
Barely got those words.
Those future projects.
Yep.
The reason that I'm asking this question, it came up for me, is thinking about some of, some of these projects, they feel like some of these are high priority and some of these are much lower. And I don't know if they need prioritization or not. How do you feel about that?
Yep, so this list down below, the future projects, is really just kind of a placeholder list, so we don't lose sight of these. They don't need to be prioritized at this point in time. What we talked about at Budget Day is a, an ideal world where at some point in the future, we look at our buildings and our needs in the buildings, much like we look at our capital projects. There is a list of criteria and we assign points based on those criteria. And that's how we decide what gets the higher up the list and what gets put further down. We don't yet have a system for that. But we would very much like to get to systems like that. This ties back a little bit to what I just said, which is the second level of experimentation on how we're managing our facilities right now. We are obviously super focused on To Lincoln and need to get through that work. And then I think we will be able to take a pause and think about what we need in terms of facilities planning and work moving forward. So, right now, that's just like a bit of a brain dump, though not a complete brain dump in terms of what's needed in the future.
I understand. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Tim, you good? I'm all set for now.
Thank you, by the way, for including the white paper from CCRPC. That is really helpful.
Yeah, no problem.
Sorry, any, any indication on that? You probably don't know, and we don't have to get deep into it on how other communities are taking that request, you heard. People are, I'm assuming they're a little further along than we are.
Yeah, I do not know the latest on where everybody is. I think before we come back with these changes for the 22nd, we can get a bit of a read on where people are.
Warned them already.
Yep. Maybe not.
All right. So, do you have any, do you have what you need? Any clarifying questions we need to answer?
I think we have what we need. And we can, I know there were some things that we're not super clear on, but we can do our best to work with that and bring you back what we think from our perspectives make the most sense.
I'll take an opportunity to see if there's anyone in the room that has any questions or comments on what we just talked about on the budget proposed for next year or on Zoom. If you do, let us know in the room or let us know on Zoom by raising your hand or otherwise contacting us. We'll give it a second for that, for Zoom, especially since we're trying something new. It does not appear that that's the case. The only other item we have tonight is an executive session.
Sorry, Raj, one thing, sorry.
Sure.
Can I just, one second, take a minute? Jess, do you need anything else on the budget?
Nope, I think I'm good for now.
Thanks for joining us, Jess.
Thank you, Jess.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Right, so, yeah, the only other item, business item we have is an executive session. So, we have removed one item from the consent agenda, there's still a couple others. Anyone have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move, we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Excellent, that's unanimously. Council member comments, city manager report.
I've got two things.
Excellent.
Or three. Fire department ladder truck is back. It arrived back at the station on the first New Year's Day, so that's very exciting to have it. As I was sitting in my office, I was like, it sounds a little bit different than the trucks that have been coming out. So, I popped up and there it was.
Taking up the entire driveway.
So, that is exciting. We do have two youth applicants for the RECA advisory committee. So, that is very exciting. One of them is able to come to your January 22nd meeting. The other candidate, unfortunately, Wednesday's is never going to work for them in their schedule to come. So, I'm hopeful that we could have volunteers to potentially talk with this person and bring that back to the group on the 22nd.
Is the, is team outside interview ready to go? Is the, is team outside interview ready to go?
Whatever it takes. That's you and me.
You too. Your past, your, your past effort went down in flames, not.
Just placeholders, buddy.
Just wondered if that offer still stood. It's okay if it doesn't.
I can help out. I'm sure it'll be fine. Let us know what time it works and we'll make it.
Excellent, thank you.
Almost a man. Okay. I just figured, they didn't get the chance the first time.
It's all good.
Then, third thing, just, um, uh, we are, uh, experiencing a bit of snow on and off. Keeps on coming, and so, uh, we are down two staff in Public Works, so I just ask for everybody's patience, particularly on sidewalks. Um, and how those, uh, get done, because we just might not be able to get it, to it as fast as we would like and as fast as, as folks are used to in the past.
These are two open positions, or is it some of those?
Two open positions.
A good reminder for the community, that we have two open positions in Public Works.
Yep.
You could really help us out there.
And if you see it, if you, if you see a sidewalk and have the backboard or the energy of the time, and you have, and you have a few minutes to do a few feet, or you see a fire hydrant that can be dug out, um, or a way to help your neighbor, please take this opportunity to, to, to do a little bit. We are not one of those communities like Somerville or others where you do your own, but if you can shovel it if you got it. Yeah.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Excellent.
I have an inquiry.
Yep.
As part of the other, uh, part, the other having a conversation with some tree farm, uh, from what I understand, the town made a decision on who was going to work with us from their side, from the select board side, do we know who they are?
Coming through clutch.
Ethan and Don?
Ethan and Don, okay.
Okay.
You love it.
This is awesome.
Kind of informal, um, test the waters and see what needs to be done.
Okay, thank you.
Great job, Logan, thank you.
Great audio visual skills, note taking.
He's hired. I have no say in that, but. Thank you, appreciate that. Just some other questions we have from, I'm going to slip those to you later. Just be our, just be our guy on the scene. All right, anybody have anything else? Great. Okay, the executive session motion is, gotta be somewhere. Who's got it first?
So there's going to be two, there's the five B.
Oh, right.
Which is page five, it looks like.
Okay, um, I move the City Council enter into executive session to discuss the appointment of public officials pursuant to one VSA Section three one three A three to include the City Manager. Second. Great, all those in favor, say aye. And then there is, thank you. And there is this one. I move the City Council enter into executive session to discuss a personnel evaluation pursuant to one VSA Section three one three A three to include the City Council and the City Manager.
Second, sorry.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we are in recess for the time being, and then executive session. Ready?
Ready.
All right, and we're back. I will make a motion to appoint Steve Eustace, Deb McAdoo, Candace Morgan, Brian Sheldon, Gabrielle Smith, Marlon Verasame and Thomas Cohen to the Governance Committee until the completion of the outlined work or by November first, two thousand twenty-five. Member terms will last for the full duration of the committee's existence.
I'll second.
Excellent. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. That is all we have tonight, um, motion adjourned?
So moved.
Excellent.
Sorry.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
You're adjourned, thank you all, appreciate it.